Okay, so I'm going to call to order the Sustainability Committee Zoom Special Meeting, November 30th, 2021, 7:00 PM. Alexis Khan present.
Sula present.
And Tula Ballastrossi.
We're waiting on, I know John Lindsay is not able to be present, Pat Turner will see if she's able to join in terms of committee members, okay. By the way, does everybody have a good Thanksgiving?
Still eating food.
That's good.
Plenty.
I was just saying, I was so bad, we I didn't make a lot of food because it, anyway, it was a small group and so I didn't have a lot of leftovers because it wasn't a lot of food. And we went through the pie pretty quickly and I had just said to my husband last night, I was like, okay, we're done with dessert for a really long time. And then, of course, I like picked up a slice of pumpkin pie from my home today. It was like, I can't eat a pie yet. Anyway. So. Do you? So I had sent out the meeting minutes. I do have two other versions of meeting minutes that I'll send out after the call. I didn't get them. I took them, but I didn't get them out early enough to for everybody to review ahead of time. But we did have meeting minutes that I sent out on first September 21st and October 12th. And technically, I guess, do we have enough of a quorum to vote on things?
Well, you have a quorum to vote. I would just abstain because I wasn't present.
Okay. I actually think that for one of these, I think it was the whoopsie, sorry. For, so the October 12th meeting, it was just you and I, Greg. So I think we're did you, did you happen to get the name of Casey's last name?
Her last name is Eckard.
So Alexis.
H A R D. K C K E E E R H A R D.
Like that? Does that look right?
I don't.
E R H A R D or E E C H?
E R H A R D.
Okay. Air Hard.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alexis, you have that meeting marked as a workshop?
Oh, I have to mark it as a workshop. Okay.
Oh, because it was my two of us.
Yeah, because you didn't have a quorum, but you still had, but you still met.
So should I say Zoom Special Workshop?
Yeah.
And do I put in the minutes that it was a workshop?
Like maybe under attendance, but not a quorum? Or you didn't have a quorum?
Okay. Oh, yeah. And then I also say the committee abstained from nominating any secretaries and not having a quorum. Okay. Okay, so just speaking of Casey, have you heard from her at all, Craig, by any chance?
Haven't. And I I'll see if I can, I don't know if she expressed some interest in holidays. It'd probably be something to think in the new year, I might. I'll make it.
And did these minutes otherwise look okay to you? I don't know if you have a chance to?
I looked at them when they first came through.
Okay. Any changes?
No.
Okay. So, and that's the case for 10, 12, and 9. The September 21st, we had me, you, and Pat. Did those look okay to you as well? But we can't vote on them. Is that correct, Tula?
You can vote on them. I would just, I'm just abstaining.
Okay. So motion to approve?
Seconded.
Okay. Both meeting minutes from September 21st, 2021, and October oh, the workshop of October 12th, 2021 are approved. If I did that right. Okay. Going to go back to the agenda. So oh, so the certification, as you know, we got from certification. I did go back. Oh, gosh, sorry. I keep changing my share screen. I'm sorry. Let me go back to this. So I went through the feedback on all of the action items that we had submitted because as I think I mentioned to you, Craig, on the last meeting, we agreed that it would be a good idea to just see where we stand on things that we've already submitted for because obviously those are kind of, again, I feel like I'm overusing the term low hanging fruit, but you know, whatever. So I went through and sorry.
It still applies, so it's okay.
So I went through and kind of reviewed those that, you know, some of the feedback was just, you got the points. So I didn't include that, but I just took those that they're, you know, they said, well, you're either close or you still need to do this. I did go back and I noted when it wasn't from 2021, like there were some feedback that was, for example, in 2020, this was, we knew that we couldn't submit any updates for the health impact assessments based on what the feedback was from 2020. But this is something that I know the Emergency Services Committee was still working, last time I talked to Tricia, was still working on the formal, you know, kind of plan that was going to have to be approved and everything like that. So from my recollection, the sustainability, the sustainable CT, when we were workshopping, you know, oh, hey, what if we submit this? They had said, you can't submit it until it's the complete and approved plan by the town. So you know, I've made notes of things like that where for the next cycle, hopefully there will be an approved plan in which case then we can submit that for consideration for this, which again, we'll go address the comments from 2020, but I wanted to make sure that they, we weren't forgetting those items because there were stuff that we had already done, but wouldn't get full credit because, you know, we just weren't there yet on 2021. So that was, you know, for the health impact assessment. There were some things, I just made notes on, you know, who I thought I need to talk to. Pat, I was going to talk to Pat about this because it was on the community garden. We had submitted a photo of the community garden in Hewitt Farm and kind of talked a little bit about what was being done with that, but I guess we didn't provide enough information in terms of projects, member numbers, member outreach efforts, partnership goals, things like that. So we needed more info in order to qualify. So I was going to Tula, do you know if Pat is the best, I mean, she had provided me some photos of Hewitt Farm, which we had used to upload. But do you know of anybody else who's a better point person for the Hewitt Farm Community Garden?
I think Mary Ann Ricker is part of the community garden.
Okay. Okay. Then there was the inventory of local businesses. That was, you know what, instead of, I'll go through this more quickly and I'll send it to you afterwards just because I feel like I could take the rest of the meeting and I'll bore you. So I'll send it out if you want to take a look, but basically my, I had identified, let me just see if there's any questions I had, but you know, I was going to talk to different people and try to get to the bottom of where I'd be able to get more information for consideration next year. You know, some things were like, I just need to talk to economic development. Now, sorry, Tula, do you happen to know who chairs that now? I know it used to be Brett, but
So they don't have their first meeting until I want to say the 21st, December 21st, I want to say. Let me just double check. So they'll have to nominate new
Okay.
Executive Committee. Let me see here. They will meet, oh, December 7th, they'll meet.
Okay. Okay.
So Tuesday, 5:30, and I think they meet in person.
Okay. Okay. In green, that just signifies that it was something that I thought we could like, maybe it wasn't a matter of just following up with somebody who is already either doing it or would be responsible for it, but rather something that maybe was, I wanted to run by the committee to see if it's something that we want to kind of at least like spur on or initiate. So for this they were saying we did get some points, but to ensure you can continue to earn more points for new projects, you could work with the Connecticut Green Bank to host educational events on CPACs geared towards property owners who want to make energy-saving improvements. So that's where I thought of that, Craig, for it seems to have some sort of overlap with what you're working on with EverSource and like an energy audit and that kind of thing. So I thought it might, it does contact the Green Bank of this this page to learn more. So I thought that maybe as we further work through this energy audit initiative, if that comes to fruition, then maybe there'd be some, you know, opportunity to get Green Bank involved and kind of, you know, you know what I mean, marry the two. So that's why I color coded this as like, maybe this is something we can actively work on that makes sense for what we're already doing. Um. So yeah, some of these were, you know, like what the towns plan on how they're maintaining their property. This was another one that I thought might be of interest. Provide education on responsible water usage. So identifying disseminate water conservation education materials to businesses and/or residents. Submit an overview of your outreach strategy. So I thought, you know, if there's some sort of, again, like campaign that just involves promotion of a certain topic. You know, I thought maybe this, if we agree, could be something that we could get involved with in terms of water conservation. I know, you know, because for websites, submit both a hyperlink and a screenshot. I was thinking maybe, you know, as a first step, we could add some, I think I had already put some stuff on water conservation that would make sense, but you know, on our sustainable, sustainable North Stonington page, if we can include resources on water conservation, that would be like a good first step. And maybe we have, you know, filled out like, one of the things I thought was great about what Casey wanted to do in her involvement was kind of social media. So maybe it would be if she does get involved where she could kind of, you know, we curate our sustainable North Stonington social media outreach, which could include something like water conservation tip, that kind of thing, maybe. Let me see if I have. I haven't included something on water conservation, but now I'm forgetting. I don't think I had, so I can add something. I have a lot of on, a lot on energy assessment and energy efficiency, but let me add something on water conservation. So I think that was kind of, oh, sorry, one other thing. Yeah. One other thing was install efficient exterior lighting. It says your streetlight inventory is quite thorough. If you added a lighting needs assessment that details what to light, when to light, and to what level the inventory assessment should include, like streetlights, exterior decorative lighting, and park lighting, as previously noted, the school site lighting plan is limited to just the school and in its current form is illegible. I don't know if this is something that the committee would want to address, but I had just kind of to that one out.
Alexis, do they, is this like the standard list and they may at some point add more initiatives on here or take some initiatives away? Or is this kind of like the standard?
No. So that's a really good question. They, when I was on their website, they, they kind of recreate every year a new kind of, you know, all their categories, like there were new ones introduced for this year. So every year they reassess it and then they create a whole new database of different action items. So a lot of them are carried over from the past year. So it, we're anticipating that many of these, usually they don't take ones away, they just add on new ones. So I anticipate that all of these, we can you know, apply for credit for next year based off of if we've already done something towards it in prior years. But they usually have new ones that they add each year, which is, you know, an opportunity for totally new action items. Is that, if that makes sense?
Yeah, yeah. I just don't want to like effort into something if they end up re-tamping it or taking it away.
Right. I haven't seen anything taken away. I've seen they, they tend to shift the, like, all the, all the order of the items, like it would be like, well, that last year, that was 2.4.1, but now it's 3.7.2 and you're like, ah, you know, why can't it just go in the same place? So they have a tendency to do that, but I haven't seen anything completely taken away. But that's a good point that, you know, we want to confirm. I think they said that they were supposed to have it out, you know, within the next couple of months or something like that. So that's, that's a good point. But I haven't seen anything taken away.
Okay.
Interestingly enough, as just an aside, and this is, I included this, it was feedback of, you know, that we we recycle many other non-mandated materials, textiles, composting, I wouldn't apply for 40 rather than 20 points. When I was with Christine and Bob last week, I want to say, and they mentioned, I'm just going to pull up the email. I can't attend the meeting because it's during the day and I have a conflict, but they said they were going to keep me updated and I'll certainly update the committee on, there is a oh, sorry, let me pull it up. S C R R R A region, Sustainable Materials Management Grant E L I decision. So it's grant program. I guess we submitted an expression of interest for the Sustainable Materials Management Grant Program. And so our proposal has been selected to advance to, this is a town, sorry, to advance phase two of the application process, which will have, will submit a full application for funding through the Sustainable Materials Management Grant Program. So there's a kickoff meeting on December 2nd from 1:00 to 3:00, and that's, as I mentioned, I can't make it, but Christine's going to be there and I think Bob's going to be there as well. And it's, the next steps in phase two are to talk about technical assistance sessions with DEEP's contractor permitted permitting considerations for food scrap collection and processing, as well as co-collection of food scraps with unit-based pricing pilot project. So basically, it sounds like it's grant funding to get us in to like a formal composting program for the town. And so more to come. They will debrief with me after this December 2nd meeting. If you have any, if you happen to be free December 2nd from 1:00 to 3:00 PM and are interested in participating, you definitely can, but I, I'm not able to. But it sounds like that might be a very interesting development if we get the grant and if we get a comprehensive program in place.
Where is the event?
I think it's on originally I thought it was on Zoom.
Oh, okay.
They didn't. They didn't give me the info.
Yeah, I don't see it. Yeah, I don't see it on their website.
I can ask though. I thought it was a virtual meeting, but I can certainly ask.
Yeah, they do the the townwide recycling events, right? The hazard is waste and stuff.
Yeah, this seems very specific, I think, for guide your development of a comprehensive plan for food waste reduction, separation, and collection with unit-based pricing programs. So it sounds very composting specific, I think.
You know, I was listening to, I think it was NPR yesterday, and they were talking about in some cities, they don't recycle because the cost of recycling is more than just throwing it in the trash. And they were considering charging the companies that use excess packaging and non-recyclable materials. They were going to charge them to cover the cost of recycling their products. It was, it was interesting to listen to. I mean, obviously, if it's cheaper for a municipality to not recycle, they're not going to recycle.
Right. That's interesting. Yeah, I, I remember when was that we weren't able to, you know, that the, it was cost prohibitive to export our recyclables to China for processing because it's, you know, they didn't want it anymore. It, you know, wasn't going to make them any money. It wasn't going to be lucrative. And it was like, well, what do we do with all this recycling? Nobody, nobody wants it. So yeah, that sounds like, so they were, was it working by making the businesses pay for it?
Well, that's what they were proposing because at that point they weren't, the towns were not recycling.
Right.
It costs too much money. So.
Yeah. Have you heard anything where North Stonington was thinking, considering not, no longer accepting recyclables or this is more of the national?
This was a national issue. I don't know specifically what region they were talking about.
I feel like we do have a good number of things that you can recycle, which is nice.
Yeah.
Any questions on, on this? And maybe this is a good segue, Craig, if you don't mind, into, since I was mentioning the energy-saving improvements through the CPACs, Green Bank thing. Any update that you want to share on that?
Oh, yeah, I finally had a phone meeting with one of the women at Energize CT and we got the ball rolling. So she, we talked last Friday. Friday, no, last Friday was the day after Thanksgiving, the Friday before that. And the she's going to send out essentially some paper literature. So pamphlets, some brochures, things we can kind of put over at town hall and at the library, just their information for getting people more knowledgeable about their audit program. She said that she was willing, or they could be willing to do more than that at any point, like if we have anything in the future regarding, you know, any events, like once things open up, I was thinking, you know, maybe the fair. They can do a table and talk to people there. So they can sort of be involved as we have larger things going on. She was willing to also come and do a talk at town hall, you know, for, for the town folks too. So there are growing options. Especially as we're in person and do things again, but at least we can, oh, and then so two pieces, one, some paperwork for individuals and also working for businesses. So things that we can get out to different businesses in town. We audit through businesses.
Is she mailing you though, or how is she getting the material?
She's mailing that stuff to me.
Okay.
And then also she recommended or suggested that we put the Energize CT contact page on our website with some information and then people could link up that way also.
So on, on the sustainable North Stonington page?
I mean, anywhere we want to put it, but that was Lisa's start there, yeah.
Okay, it's Energy, Energize CT.
Energize CT, yeah.
Okay. Let me just start. And is it, um did they have any kind of, did they talk in any way about pricing in terms of like subsidies or grants or anything like that? Like in terms of if we wanted to try to give people access to a free energy audit?
During COVID, it was free. As of right now, residentials are 50 bucks.
Right.
Yeah. They do, they have a specific program for low-income people. So essentially, I don't know how they determine these things, but anyone who determined to be low-income actually gets an insert, this is across Connecticut, they get an insert in their EverSource bill with information saying that this is available and it's free.
Oh.
And I forget what the, what the line is exactly. That's already switched places.
And I think if I remember correctly, you had mentioned that the audit itself, let's say you're paying full price is $50, but then anything that they do in terms of mitigation efforts are included in that cost? Is that correct? Like they'll replace LED, put LED light bulbs in and do all the things.
Bulbs and the insulation strips and anything that they do, there's no extra costs, it's all included. So you really, it's you know, even if it costs you 50 bucks, you definitely say, it's definitely money-saving. I mean, that's sort of the push, right? Like the resources they give you immediately, you don't pay for, and obviously the whole idea is not, you know, partially to save the world and partially to pay less on your energy bill.
So I guess my question is, because I know we were talking about whether we would apply for a sustainable CT matching grant for this. But I guess the question I would raise is since they've determined that people under a certain income level can get it for free and they're mentioning it on their audit, on their, on their electricity bill, do we want to try to get grant match? Program?
I don't, I don't think there's really a place for it. I think, I think the, the better use of our energy is just getting the word out, which, you know, and these are, I understand these are like relatively minor ways, right? Someone else like picks something up in a couple of places in town that some people go to. I think going, getting, communicating to businesses is great. And we can, you know, everything sort of intertwines, right? So if we're doing some of the other work engaging businesses in town, then this is just like part of that communication.
Right. And I'm, I'm almost wondering if like, let's say we approach a town and say, hey, did you know you can get an energy audit in here, but it entails our business? And then if we can give them materials, like public-facing businesses, whether they would just keep a brochure, you know, the like honor for the liquor store, you know what I mean? That would just be like a brochure on the energy audit that they could have available to people who come in as customers if they're, if they're open to it.
Right.
You know, I just got an email from EverSource today and my usage is solid. Month over month, year over year, I use the same amount. So my bill has increased, the usage is the same, the delivery charge has doubled. So in the recent email they sent, they're saying that in January, that residential customers, their supply is going to go up. So if you use 700 kilowatts per month, you're going to see a 21% increase on your bill. Which is about $31 over compared to December. So I think Which is about thirty-one dollars over compared to December, so I think once people get the shock of their bill increasing, I I'm thinking they're gonna be showing more interest in this program. Especially since, you know, you paid the fifty dollars, but like you said, you. Get maybe more insulation, or you get some sort of um tools and whatever to help you save energy. Like, I'm at the point where I should shrink my wrap my windows, I'm too lazy, but I know I should, because I know my rate's gonna go up.
Yeah.
But no one likes doing that, right?
We've done ours before, because we. That's the other thing is that we um. The I mean, this is this is supply and demand, this has nothing to do with that Ever Source, but. We had wanted to get some of our windows replaced that will that have an issue with clearly not being well sealed, and. You can't get somebody to just do two or three windows, you know, they're 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 not gonna come out to do it. They're either gonna do, you know, full house or full side of your house. Um. We have a window broken in our basement that we called, and it was even through somebody that we know, so we had more of an in than um and and so it needs to be months. They won't just replace one window.
No, especially during now, it's very hard to get a contractor out for a small job.
Right.
Yeah.
So shrink wrap it is.
Let's have a party.
Looks so bad, but it's like, well, when you're saving money on your electricity bill.
Well, that's the that's the problem. I don't want to crank the heat in my house, because I know it's literally going out the windows.
Right.
So I tell the kids, put a sweatshirt on, put your socks on, like, I'm we're not going through all this oil in a month.
Right. Yeah, I wondered um. I know. I'm trying to think of, we had one done when we first moved in. I'm trying to think of what they did. Um. I think they also do patches, like I think they also patch up some if you have like, if they find that you have an um like a hole or something that's letting in a lot of air. Um, so I think they do quite a bit, if not just like, oh, we'll replace a couple lights or something.
Oh, yeah, I mean, they they brought in this like giant fan, stuck it in the door.
Yep.
This is impressive.
I wondered, oh, question. Did they happen, did she happen to know, I don't know if this is this is this that they she would have access to, but did she happen to know of the house? Number of houses that are in the town of North Stonington, how many of them have had an energy audit through Energize?
Oh, I wonder if they can get the information.
Because I'm just curious of like eighty percent of the town has already had one, then it's sort of like, all right. Maybe we're barking at the wrong tree, but um. I mean, not to say that the twenty percent don't matter, but you know what I mean?
It's on my list.
Is it easy to schedule an appointment, do you think, Craig?
Say again?
Do you think it, do they make it easy to schedule an appointment?
I mean, I have that, you see, you you put in. You know, your information. You want to do. You submit, and I have to get pretty quick, it's probably pretty good though. Energy efficiency. Like your electric company. We, I mean, so we people, the right clue in North Stonington, do we know how many residences there are? Is that a knowable number?
Probably, uh, I want to say maybe around five thousand. We have forty-six hundred registered voters. So I'd say around five thousand. Maybe, maybe more.
Tula, I have a quick question on a different um. Topic while while um, because Craig, you're you're looking for the operator, is that correct?
Um, I was just popping out an email for her, just supposed to.
Oh, okay, sorry, I thought we were waiting until you pulled a number up.
Well, was I supposed to looking something up? I'm sorry.
No, 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 I I I misinterpreted. I was waiting for you on something, and I misinterpreted what you were doing. Um. Tula, do you happen to know if Bob is doing, I haven't seen one come through, but it could be also. I I missed it. Um. Is Bob doing like a weekly update the way that Mike did them on Fridays?
I don't, I don't know.
Okay, I should have asked him today, um, but I was just curious, because I had as a follow-up item as um. To try to promote the sustainable North Stonington website, and um I meant to ask him if he could, you know, do a plug for it.
I'm sure he's doing something, so I would I would definitely reach out to him and and ask him to do that.
Okay. Um. The next item on the agenda um was just kind of, we haven't heard back as far as I know, and maybe, I think. You know, change of administration, everything. Um. But as far as I know, we haven't heard back from the Sustainable States, um, the Great Plains Institute regarding next steps for the climate planning and technical assistance. Um, that we're embarking on as part of Sustainable CT. Um, just for. Your reference, Tula, um, the way that we left it from kind of our initial one-on-one with them is that. The area that we see maybe the most potential in terms of. Um. You know, in investigating the impact um on. At, you know, because we're such an agricultural community, um, sort of sustainable farming practices like methane capture. Um, and how that could potentially, you know, help sort of bring down the level of carbon emissions and and methane that we have as a result of being a very agricultural community. Um, and so the. That was, it wasn't like a defined, but we're supposed to kind of pick a focus for it, because obviously, climate climate resiliency is so broad, and. We, as compared to, let's say, a city that has a lot of, you know, um. Fuel, you know, heavy traffic, and that's the big producer of their energy, of their um carbon. And emissions, and as compared to, let's say, like a coastal town that climate resiliency is about, you know, what do they do if. And when seawater rises, we were trying to think about like, well, what is most impactful for us as a very rural agricultural community? Um, and so we had some discussions. Um, John had found something on rural book farming use cannon that had a compost project that was put in place for methane capture. Um, so. I, more to come on that, but we just, I think we need to make sure that we. I suppose, like, are kind of um. Targeting something that we want to really work on with this um. Uh, committee, or what is it called? The. The Sustainable States, um, to make sure that, like, we all agree or have some sort of direction, because they're gonna ask us, like, okay, what do you want to work on, basically? Um, so do you have any thoughts on that? I mean, do you, were you sort of envisioning a different direction that we would take for this? Climate resiliency planning, or does that sound good to you?
You know, it's it, you know, it's funny, because I I hear that, you know, cows. Contribute to forty percent of methane and and, you know, and and global warming, and, you know, and the the answer I keep hearing is, you know, don't eat steak, and I'm like, okay, yeah, I'm I'm not gonna eat steak, and then, you know, the next day, I'm having like a beef taco, so. Like, I don't, so it's like, that may not be the answer, especially for towns that may hey may have. A dairy farm, so, you know, what is the solution? And I, this is. I don't know why I didn't even think about our town during this, um, you know, the. Uh, I think it was a Netflix show that I was watching. I just thought, okay, I'm just, I'm just not, I'll just not contribute to, you know, the beef industry, and not even thinking that our town contributes to a lot. Of um the problem, and so I think this is a great thing to take on, especially since I think that a lot of um. Um, multi-generational farms here are probably hesitant to change their practices.
Oh.
Um, but if we show them some sort of initiatives and um. The impact they can make, um, I think this would be a solid initiative for us to focus on.
Yeah, and that was kind of, and Craig, oh, sorry, I've been talking about, if you want to jump in on, because you were privy to that, um, our like post discussion. But, you know, we were talking about, like, trying to get the younger generation of farmers, um, you know, kind of maybe involved once we have something more concrete, and like Farmer Bree was. Craig, you had brought her up as, you know, she she may already be doing something that could serve as some sort of model to the other farms, or maybe she would be more open to giving it a try, even if she's not. Um. So, uh, that was. Yeah. Along the lines of, we're gonna have to, if we do anything, our kind of preliminary conclusion was that we'd have to make a really compelling play. Compelling case for why it's. Um, not going to cost them any money, so whether it's through grants that that, you know, farmers not making any money, so if this is gonna cost them any money, it's not gonna happen. So either if it's through a grant that can offset the cost of implementing something, or if it's because um they can finance the. The um, like upfront costs, because they're gonna be able to um through the methane capture actually generate, you know, like, they're not gonna spend money on. Um, one example was like powering um. All their farm equipment through the energy captured through the this whole system, and so like, if over the course of ten years, they're going to save however much on fuel for their. Equipment, then, you know, maybe it's a matter of financing, not like an outright grant, but in in some sense, it's not gonna, it's gonna have to be a net neutral cost to them in order to make this case. So we we kind of discussed that as well.
Yeah, it's it's like the restaurants that recycle their use cooking oil. It has to be easy, and it has to be cost-free, especially as farmers that are spending. A lot of their time, a lot of labor from sunup to sundown. They're they're not gonna, you know, take part of a program that's gonna take a time away from. What they need to be doing, and especially if it costs money, like we were talking about with municipality. And recycling, if it costs more to do it, they're probably not gonna do it, even if it's for the better. To do it.
Right.
You know, you're not gonna do it. So, yeah, if there's a way to um. Give some sort of um grants or um initiatives to make it easy and um want them to participate. If we can turn it into. Gasoline for the car, I don't know.
Right. Yeah, so I think we're waiting to hear what the next steps are, because I think Great Plains is supposed to sort of provide us with a lot of the. Sort of like. Guardrails and maybe resources for what, you know, ultimately what we choose to do, like how to actually get this done, and they did say they'd be willing to join one of our um. Meetings, so maybe I was thinking like in, you know, Q one of next year, maybe they could come join one of our sustainability committee meetings. But I just want to make sure that um. That we have sort of consensus amongst the committee that this is the direction that we want to take it.
Yeah, I mean, I think I think this is potentially more. A more impactful avenue or North Stonington than than a lot of other things that we can do, and the. The inroads are gonna be challenging, and it's probably gonna be real slow, and. We're not gonna see dramatic change. Anytime, maybe soon, but. Um. I think that if we're if we're really putting the context of where we are into what we want to do, then that's. What we have to do.
Right. Okay. Um. Paul, you have this Pat not here, I do know that the bank account is open, so um I think the plan was, you know, the bank account would need to be open in order to start the crowdfunding campaign, but I know that, I think it's. The plan was to do it sometime in the spring. When we can start planting things again, so I think we're, they're kind of on hold, but I think that I I do know that the account is open. Um, I don't know if Pat had anything else to share on that, but um. Then the only other thing I, Tula, last time I gave a plug for Mike's um. Environmental action fundraiser this Friday, just because it seems like. This is the place to promote it.
Are you going?
I'm not, because I have another um event that evening that I had already committed to. I made a contribution, um. So.
I'll be there.
Oh, good, 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 good. And with Craig, have I still not, did you get the invitation or no?
No.
Okay, let me send it now before I forget. Um, I'll just forward it to you.
The fake experience is playing. He got a band, Matt Mike got a band.
Oh, 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 oh. I was like, what's the fake experience?
They're they're a a local um band in town. They're a cover band.
Oh, fun.
Oh.
Have you seen them before?
Yeah, I saw him at Stonington Vineyards. Pretty good.
Is it, uh, what kind of music?
They're just a cover band.
All right, I just sent it to you. I. Let me know if that's not the. Alrighty. Anything else that? Anybody wants to talk about?
Did you have any, um, I was at number seven, the website update?
Oh, 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 um. That was more of a, uh, I mean, I don't know if you've seen it, Tula, um, it was kind of just a plug to um. We have two different, I poply, I've asked Jim, Jim has really done the, you know, obviously, I didn't like actually do the website design, but um. Like, I gave him the content to populate some of the pages, and really, it's a plug for. Plug for the two areas that I'm trying to keep kind of refreshed with new content is the resources. Um, so that's where I had, you know, the home energy assessments, that kind of thing, I'll add Energize to that, I'll ask Jim to update it. Um, but also kind of the, it's not, it's not really tips, but it's more like. Stuff that's caught our eye, so like the NASA logistics of returning your two small pants, that was something that Craig had shared that he had read. Um, so maybe even like. Um. Tula, for example, that NPR article, I know you'd listen to it, but if you could find like a link to, you know, they do the transcript sometimes. Um, that could even be something that we add. Um, so it's just kind of like things that we come across. That we think it's worth uh putting on the site for kind of general purpose sharing. Um. And if 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 there's something right now that you can think of, if you want to send it to me, or if you want to, um, you know, just as you come across things, it's kind of a general plug to just make sure that this stays, I want, I want to try to keep this down. You know, having interesting new stuff, so for example, I'm gonna ask, in addition to the Energize link, I'm gonna ask um Jim to add as well some um. An article on water conservation, for example. Um. It's funny, I feel like this is such an example of like, if you don't live in a place that's dealing with a shortage of something. It's so easy to take it for granted, because we. The past few, you know, I know last summer we had a pretty bad drought, but otherwise, we kind of live in like a wet place, so I don't always. Pay enough attention to water conservation, because I'm always like, there's plenty of that, where that came from, it's been raining for days, you know, so I I that's like. We still have to pay attention to it, even if it's not something that like, you know, our wall is about to go dry.
Well, I I think um it was last year that Groton had uh the rain barrel initiative. And you could buy them from their town hall at a discounted price. Um. Uh, you know, and and I think it was just kind of just make it easier for people to give to to get and a little at a little bit of a discount. Uh, you know, and and I think it was just kind of just make it easier for people to give, to to get and at a little bit of a discounted rate too.
Right. Yeah, we actually have one and we've never, not good, we've never used it. But that's nice that they're, you know, then like sort of promoting it as something that people should be doing.
Yeah, regardless of you're in a drought area, just the the mindset of reusing and not wasting.
Right. Okay, anything else?
So you have, I, um, okay, so the, okay. Sorry, I'm just looking over the agenda. I think we hit everything. Okay. So we're meeting the first Tuesday of the month?
That's starting in twenty twenty-two. So I think we're gonna finish up um the year. I think uh the twenty-eighth, I think it's gonna be tough for me too. And I know, Craig, I think you mentioned that the twenty-eighth. So I might just cancel the meeting on the twenty-eighth, just because it's like so close to Christmas. But I think we have one more meeting then that would be on the fourteenth.
Okay. And our, for the, for twenty twenty-two, is it just one meeting a month, or is it the first and third, or the, or is it, well, what is it?
I think what we're gonna do and certainly um take your input too, but we are gonna just do one regular scheduled meeting per month and then fill in as needed if we're feeling like, oh, gosh, too much time is left, let's fill it in. But maybe do those as special meetings rather than um a regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, so then you're gonna file with um the town clerk though? Okay.
Does that sound good to you in terms of just having one once a, once a month?
I think it's easier to have one once a month and call a special meeting versus
Right.
having meetings and then canceling them.
Right, right. Okay, that makes sense. So yeah, I'll file, file that with Aunt Matt. So I guess like, if I think about where things stand now and what we wanna focus on, um, sounds like Craig, you're getting some materials and we can kind of, once you get them, we can take a look at them maybe and regroup on where to go on the energy audit. Does that sound good?
Yep.
And then, um, I mean, I do, I'll, I'll try to look more into the Laurel Brook um situation, but I I know, you know, I I feel like there's great opportunity. I I feel like, um, we, there's a lot of areas that we, you know, there's so many different areas of sustainability and we're, you know, kind of like, oh, what about this? And what about that? And what about this? And I feel like if you agree that we're kind of getting to the point where maybe we now need to kind of like choose what we champion as like the big things that, because there's, you know, first we had Sustainable CT application. So it was all like, oh, okay, we gotta do this and that and this and that to get the application together. And so now that that's, you know, done for until next year, and I put together, you know, the odds and ends that we just need to follow up on to get maximize our points. But then I feel like we almost, you know, it almost needs to like hone in on what we wanna actually put some effort into. And um, you know, I think the energy audit thing, if if you're interested in that, Craig, I think that's a great one to really grab on to. And then certainly the um, the whole thing with, you know, methane capture and sustainable agriculture. Um, also the textiles, I haven't, I'm reaching out to the head of the library because the town, uh, the school has. Maybe, Tula, do you have more connections in the school?
Yeah.
Peter Nero never got back to us. I followed up a couple of times. This is about Bay Street textiles. There, um, it's really easy. It's just like a matter of having a bin um on on the school campus. They're getting one at the um, at the transfer station. And um, there was, we were talking about maybe if the school didn't wanna get involved, that maybe we would do it at the library instead. But basically, the idea is have a bin for textile recycling at the school, but have it be, um, the person that I contacted at Bay Street Textiles has said that they are, they get much more success for their program if they like kind of use it as an educational opportunity so that like there's some sort of integration of what they do and, you know, recycling the textiles and how the impact is and, you know, that kind of thing with the schoolchildren, because then they bring it home to their parents and say, oh, mom, you know, you need to clean out your closet and throw this in the bin. Um, so, but Peter has not paid attention. Um, and I wasn't sure if there was somebody else that you think would be worth talking to.
You know, this might be a good PTO initiative, so I'll reach out to the PTO. Um, they get things done and they get things done quickly, so.
Oh, that's awesome. I can send you, I'll forward you the email that I
Okay.
had with the, um, because Mike, Mike and Christine had, I had reached them in originally. And then they had talked to Peter. Um, and then I followed up with Peter and it just seemed like they were just falling on deaf ears. And so we were gonna try to try a different tactic. So yeah, no, PTO would be great.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. What do you think about sort of like honing in? I know, you know, Pat's running with the uh, the pollinator pathway thing, but to try, try to like sink our teeth into a few things rather than just sort of, you know.
What, what is our, our goal? Is our goal to get silver? Is our goal to focus on North Stonington? Or is our goal to, I mean, what is, what are we focusing on?
Um, so I think that, I mean, certainly a goal would be to get silver, but I think that's my, I guess what I would sum it up with is my complaint, if I had to make any, with the, with the way that the Sustainable CT thing is done in prior years, is it seems like just scrambling to get kind of credit for what we've already done, which is great because you're promoting it, you're you're databasing it, you know, it's like uh, uh, it's um, an assessment or inventory of everything that's been done. It's fantastic. But I guess the point is that we, in prior years, my role has been very much like, instead of what are we gonna do to propel sustainability forward, it was just very much like, what have we done so we can get credit for it? And so I would say less emphasis on silver and more like to me personally, and this is just my opinion, and certainly, you know, the committee to to decide if you agree with me. But it would be if we do something really great for the sustainability of the town and it gets absolutely zero credit for a Sustainable CT initiative, that's fine for for my standpoint, because we've done something that's amazing and helping the town. You know what I mean? So if we can get credit for it, great, we'll just get additional certification, but that's not like the main objective, if that makes sense?
Yeah, I like, I I agree, like, let's not get points for the sake of getting points, but let's focus on the initiatives that keeps this town sustainable, which like the methane gas is a huge one, right? Um, water and sewer. So, yeah, if we could focus on the ones that um benefit us the most. And then if we need points, then we go after the, you know, the other ones with the extra time.
Okay.
Alrighty. Well, unless you had anything else, um, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Alrighty, well, thank you both. Um, it's great to see you again, Tula.
Oh, nice to see you. So the fourteenth?
Yes.
Okay. All right, perfect. See you then.
Sounds good.
All right, good night, guys.
Have a good night.